I guess you might as well give me like a whole bag of that.
I own it all, okay.
Yeah, hey Phil, do you have a bag of uh?
Mints?
Mints or something you can give him?
Oh, I, I.
Oh, good grief.
Somebody have cough drops?
I'm hoping you're better today.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't catch anything, so I felt all right.
No, they got things, they got things called cough drops.
So, here and then I was on my Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, I had, I was still coming from just about this year, Friday.
I kept looking over at you.
The February 3rd, 2025 Auburn City Council Workshop will be called to order. The first item tonight is an update on the Lewiston Falls Hydropower Relicensing by Mr. Cousins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to take a minute to call attention to where we are in the FERC licensing process for Lewiston Falls. We've been working on this since, well, really this active licensing process since 2021. But as I was just talking with Councillor Whiting, shortly before that, the applicant started making changes to the existing license, including reducing the project area before they entered this active licensing process. And so we've been, we've been talking about this facility with Brookfield for at least six years, most actively since 2021, when they started the current licensing process. I do want to just take a second for you and for the public that may be interested in this. We are maintaining a rivers and hydropower section of the city website here. You'll see the documents that are in your packet tonight at the top of the list, and we'll keep adding to that through the process. So it's accessible to the public. The FERC site is challenging to navigate unless you, you do it regularly. So we've been trying to make sure that's available locally on the city's website. Auburn has been more active in this licensing process than most and been recognized as that at some, some events around the state as communities try to participate in this process. We're sort of the underdog, I think, in the process. Brookfield and other major hydropower developers or owners have teams of skilled consultants that spend their careers going through this licensing process. And we come in and try to, try to advocate for our interests locally. We've had a lot of help from, from state and federal agencies that are engaged in that process more often with process, and FERC has been great to coach us on the process, but not on the content of what we're advocating for. We're fortunate because our comprehensive plan has very clear goals laid out, centered on the river as an asset for economic development, for recreation, quality of life. This is a major facility, 28.44 megawatts. Significant amount of power is being generated at this hydropower facility, and they are using the Publix River to do that. So that's what this process is for, to try to balance those, those interests. As I said, it does require that we, the FERC balance the interests related to fisheries, recreation, water quality, other impacts of the operation. And they're to be given equal consideration with power generation. So that's changed over the decades, and I think there is more strength in advocating for mitigation now than there was in previous licensing processes, including aesthetics over the falls, which has been a big part of the discussion, recreational access and, and river flows for different types of recreation. We've been in collaboration with a group of stakeholders, including the city of Lewiston, Appalachian Mountain Club, Trout Unlimited, Maine, sorry, National Park Service has been helpful in helping us navigate the process and as well as state agencies and other local groups like River, the River Working Group with Grow LA. It's important that we participate. It's sort of a once in a career shot, I think, to be a part of this process for a community. Licenses are good for 30 to 50 years. So if we don't take a shot at this, then, you know, most of us here won't, won't be involved in the next process. And there's a lot of, lot of goals that we see in other projects, achieved in other projects that are already laid out well in our comprehensive plan. It's been a long process to date. It started in 2021 with the pre-application document. I won't read through all these, but draft study plan. We participated in a pretty rigorous aesthetic flow study. They did a very good job identifying different flows through different parts of the dam and having a team of stakeholders identify which water amounts and which locations gave the best aesthetic on the falls. And then at this point, we've submitted our comments on the final, final license application and the first real involvement with FERC now. Up till now, we've been responding to Brookfield's proposed license documents directly to Brookfield and copying FERC. Now is where FERC takes over and starts to be the, the arbiter, I guess, of the process from here on out and has the ability to tell Brookfield where they're falling short rather than Brookfield just agreeing to either do something or not do something. The significant major shortcomings, I think, left for items that the communities and stakeholders have asked for that Brookfield has not been willing to take on is an improved portage trail from the North River Road boat launch to the existing River Walk. That would have to pass under the railroad bridge, either along the river or on Turner Street. The city's been working for a number of years to try to acquire access rights, and I don't know if you remember that we did acquire those rights from the self-storage project. There's a really short stretch now that we don't have access rights along the river or Brookfield doesn't already own it. And we really are pushing to try to further that idea that the portage doesn't have to be entirely along Center Street and Turner Street. Aesthetic flows, the stakeholder group requested 40 scheduled aesthetic flows that would coincide with holidays or major events downtown and then some Friday nights throughout the course of the summer so that there could be visible water on the falls for people to enjoy in the downtown during that period. Brookfield has proposed six, much less than what was requested, but we'll work through that and maybe end up somewhere, somewhere in between. Emergency and recreational access below Dresser Rips, or I've just heard tonight, learned tonight, that it's also been known as Pendley Rips down by the old Delecto. Right now, we have access at Festival Plaza. There's an access in Lewiston right by the water treatment plant. Both of those are above the Dresser Pendley Rips. And in the past, responding to emergencies, it's been a real challenge to move with the river through those rips to, to follow an emergency downstream as they try to help somebody involved. We're looking for access below Dresser Rips, but not all the way down to the current access point in Durham just because it takes a long time to respond by boat on a trailer to Durham and then to boat back up river to try to respond to Dresser Rips. We've asked for far more robust maintenance plans, and we've asked for recreational flow information. This one should be relatively simple, but recreational flow information on what types of boating are most fun and safe at different water flows. And then through a website that already exists for hydropower facilities in Brookfield. And in particular, we're looking to be able to provide real-time information on flows so people can make decisions about when is the right day to go use the river in the way that they like to use it. Next steps, we received the scoping document after your packets went out last week. Last Thursday night, I think it came in. That lays out the issues that FERC sees as remaining issues that they would expect the applicant to address so that they can do a NEPA, National Environmental Policy Act review and a finding that's required as part of the FERC process. That was issued last week. There are scoping meetings. I think one of the big points of talking to you this week about it, and hopefully the public hears about it, is that there are scoping meetings with FERC in Lewiston on February 19th and then a site walk on February 20th. Publix welcome to attend the scoping meetings. We'll be talking with some staff and board members from Sustainability Committee, and we're hoping to have a number of people there at the scoping meetings on February 19th. There's one in the morning, and then there's one in the evening. I have those times on a slide coming right up, and then the actual site walks on the 20th, if anybody's interested in that. The scoping document is on our website, and you do have to sign up ahead of time for the site walk so that they can provide transportation with the scoping meetings you just, just show up at. And those are right across the river in the Hampton Inn Hotel. It's not the end of comments. Scoping comments are due March 5th, so we'll, we'll have a chance to talk to FERC on the 19th, but we'll still have a little bit of time after that. And depending on how things are going at the scoping meeting and with comments and Brookfield's responses, we are talking at a staff level about possibly asking the council to consider a resolve, maybe at that first meeting in March, just laying out if the council has a strong feeling on the remaining items that have not been addressed. I think there could be some value in that, especially if Lewiston and Auburn both choose to do that, to just be standardized in what we're asking for, and we have been so far, but for the actual elected officials to weigh in on that specifically. If needed, based on the scoping sessions, we might see another scoping document. And then sometime next summer, they're targeting August is when they might issue that the project is ready for the NEPA analysis process to begin, and then we could advocate for, for more mitigation during that process with an anticipated closeout date and issues, issuance of a license in 2026. So 9:00 AM February 19th is the first scoping meeting across the river at the Hampton Inn. And then from 7:00 to 10:00 PM is another one. Publix welcome at either one of them, but I know FERC, from talking with them, usually sees a lot more elected officials and community organizations at the daytime one and then a lot more members of the public participating at the, the evening one, and they, they anticipate that. And then again, just the city's website, auburnmain.gov, we have the government rivers hydropower site, and there's a lot of information there if anybody wants to learn more about that. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? No, thank you very much, Mr. Cousins.
Thank you.
The next item is an update on the 121 Mill Street Resource Center, Mr. Holmes.
Good evening. Excited to be here tonight, so things have happened since the last time I was here. We had a Sunday Warming Center event, I guess we'd call it. Had the East Auburn Church come down, and we had the drop-in center there. As far as staff, didn't have a lot of people. The weather was warmer than predicted when we made the decision on the previous Thursday. But it was great to see those volunteers get to know each other and kind of be in the space. And we have hopefully some pictures. Is he gonna, does he do that or do I do that? He told me they'd be available. Right there. So... This is the beginning. So if you haven't been in the space since the renovation started, you, if you had been there, you'll know it was sticky floors and concrete and drywall was cut up quite a bit. Can I go to the next? It's changed a lot. We now have all the tables and chairs that were ordered have been in. Do you see eight people to a table? So we can put about 100 people in the space at one time. We have two restrooms that are men's and women's room here that are already available. There's three stalls in each one of those so that people can have access to that. Basically behind this door here is where all the construction is on the other half of the building, but it's coming along well. The drop-in center was actually open on Saturday, and they served over 60 people. This was the day before when they were getting ready to things set up. And this is kind of where their storage area, if you remember that building at the very front, there's kind of a double office, and they're starting to bring all their stuff in for all their paper goods and things like that. And well, as kind of the other direction, looking back out through the door. And then at the other end of the building where they have their clothing closet, that's starting to also fill up quickly, you can see. So this is the area they're actually leasing from the city on a full-time basis. So there's this room and another room to the right where all of the clothing will be there, and they'll have that open whatever hours they choose. But Wednesdays and Saturdays is when it's normally open, and people will be able to go in and actually shop in here to pick out some clothes that they need, things like that. So it's starting to come together. Obviously, like any project like this, we've had some bumps along the road. This Saturday, I got a phone call and the, they script a breaker. And of course, we assumed that the electrical panel in the room would be where the breaker would be. Well, if you went halfway down the building on the other side, the construction zone is where that breaker actually was. So it took some time, but the city electrician came over, helped everybody out, and we've made sure that we'll have enough circuits there for this weekend so that they shouldn't have that problem. But I can't tell how proud I am of all the help from all the departments. I can't tell, I think every single department in the city has got a phone call from me or my staff at some point to help with this project, whether it be Public Works or Planning and Permitting, or even the front desk, because we have, we're getting questions asked and making sure they had the right information. Everyone's been amazing to make sure this is going on. I can also tell you that the neighbors so far have been amazing. I mean, they've come over, they've shared their concerns, and we've been able to address them pretty quickly. I've got a few calls from a couple of councillors, and we've been able to take care of those things. So the things we've talked about from the beginning will happen. Some of them are just going to take a little bit of time. I know we talked about a fence between the two properties. That will happen, but obviously not until probably like May, towards the end of the project, simply because it's winter time and it's a little tough to put the fence in without paying extra. So we're really trying to address those issues. But anybody who has any comments from the public, please feed them back to us. The drop-in center is very responsive to getting these things fixed. They've been an amazing partner. I've used, Greg Whitney and I were both on Channel 8 last week, it was in the paper already. There's a lot of good publicity going on out there, and I think we've got something we can be really proud of as we continue to build this and make it bigger and stronger. Now, the next question is probably going to be like, what about the money because of what's been going on? Now, Phil's going to cover that as well. But we've been in touch with HUD, the 108 loan, which is also, you know, the money that we really going to need to make this project come across the finish line. They're confident as long as nothing else changes, by the end of February, we should have a commitment letter in place for that loan. They don't see anything that's, anything that they're questioning within our paperwork or our application, any of that stuff. Just didn't matter their process getting to that finish line. So they've been very, very helpful. Questions?
Questions from the council? Council Walker?
I don't have a question, but at this point, everything seems to be rolling the way we were hoping it was going to roll, and I think they're doing a great job.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions?
I'll second that comment. I agree with Councillor Walker. It's, it's, you know, it got a tour during that first opening, that soft launch, kind of. And it's exciting, there's a lot of, it looks great, and the, the other half, as we're moving forward, is, that's, remind me of the timetable.
So we're, we're hoping for April, April 1st, but I'm really pushing, all of my leases I'm working with people are May 1st. Hopefully we get in during the month of April. We've started negotiations with our landlord at 95 Main Street, our neighbor. They're very excited to see us move out so they can take over that space. We were actually contacted by a Department of State today who's looking for space in the area. So we're going to be talking to them about possibly having a state agency that might be interested in being there that I think would fit really well with what we're doing. So things are coming along. We're pretty much out of space, so hopefully we have enough space for everybody.
Council Mills?
Do you, do you feel like at this point, it's going to be able to pay for itself?
At this point, I'm very confident that based on the current leases that people have either signed letters of intent for or have signed leases, that we should be able to generate enough money to plow, keep it plowed, lights on, all the utilities and the maintenance and upkeep moving forward at this point. As long as that all holds, I don't see any issue. Right now, we're looking at, obviously that means the city would be paying rent as well. So therefore, the space we rent, just like anywhere else, we, we have to have a cost for. But it's built into our federal budget, so therefore it won't be an issue from that point of view. Would generate over $100,000 a year, which is about what we think we'll take to run that building.
Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several tenants come from Barker over to your Warming Center, Drop-In Center, whatever we call it for whatever given day. 90% of them are wowed at what we've been able to accomplish, and they're excited for the prospects going forward or what else can, you know, be done in there. Like when all these agencies come in, and I've explained to them, it's not just for homeless people.
It is not.
It's for homeless people, those that may be on the verge of homelessness. Residents at Barker, if they have questions on some of their paperwork from the various agencies, they can come on over and have their, you know, have somebody help them fill out something. I mean, I know we have social coordinators at Barker, but sometimes.
They need a little more.
They need a little bit more, and they like the idea that if they would like to come in to socialize, maybe get a cup of coffee or a meal, they're going to be welcome to come.
Absolutely.
And if they, they know a craft or something they can share, they're, I mean, it'll get them out of, some of them out of their shells because some of them don't, they have mobility issues and they can't go far. And this is like right next door, so they're very happy. And I want you to thank you for, and the city for all that they've done to bring us to this point.
Thank you for the comments, and yeah, I hope everyone understands this is a public process and it's a public building. Right now, yes, it's kind of limited because of where the, the construction and just trying to manage occupancy. But once we get to May and everybody's moved in, you know, this is going to be a, people can lease it for a very reasonable price to be able to have events there, do things there, other organizations can come in and do things. This is not just for a drop-in center or just for this program. This is going to be something that will expand and grow because I need more money to help keep everybody happy.
Any other questions from the council?
I, I went down Saturday morning, I thought it went very well. Great job by the, the Drop-In Center staff to get up and running. Very happy, a number of councillors checked in. Councillor Wisner came down to see what was going on. Councillor Walker, Councillor Gary checked in, so it's a really good start. There's more to be done construction-wise and to get us where we want to go, but I, I think we've got a really good start. Really appreciate all the work from your office and the other city staff that's helped out.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is discussion of the FY26 budget schedule, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are in full budgets mode currently. Assistant City Manager, the Finance Director, myself, have currently met with all departments. We've done the first, first review of budgets. My recommendations are, are being completed now as we continue working through this. We are on track to be on, on schedule for, I guess, what would be our first meeting, which would be with the Planning Department, Planning Board, rather. According to Charter, City Manager meets with the Planning Board to discuss capital improvement projects. That's currently scheduled for March 11th. And so, so we'll be on track for, for that session. Key is to have that meeting so that I have feedback from the Planning Board, and then I'll be bringing the five-year CIP plan back to you on March 17th. Then at that meeting, I'll also be presenting the preliminary FY26 budget, this five-year CIP plan. And then we will have time in that workshop. We're working through that currently with staff to ensure that that workshop is really committed to just budget. And as we had talked, when the Superintendent and I came before you, now almost a month ago, we discussed your expectations for the FY26 budget. Our goal in, you know, what I've been able to do so far with the preliminary budget is to just bring forward a budget that includes current existing programming with their new costs, whether it's contracts or utility increases. And so that's what we're on track to provide you. I, I check in with the Superintendent regularly, she's in that same process. She's doing that work currently with the School Committee, and, and so she is also on track for that goal. What we will bring forward is the, the manager's recommendation based on current programming. And, and then we will have a list of, here are some of the other items that we feel are priorities for your consideration. And I think, you know, an example that we've already identified, we don't have a lot on this list. There might be four or five items that are on that list. One of them, we budgeted FY25 partial third ambulance. Putting a third ambulance on to handle with that call volume. What you'll see in that list of, all right, that's not in the FY26 budget, but an item for you to consider will be, what are the costs to bring that third ambulance on for a greater period of time? And we're working through that with the Fire Chief now on where we think the, the right balance is. Remember, third ambulance, when we, when we roll third ambulance out, that's overtime. That's not using existing or bringing people in, additional people in to fill that. That's just saying, we've identified these peak times throughout the week, and this is when we believe we need to have a third ambulance. So you'll see items like that that we'll have on there. We'll have a full detail of, of the cost for those items, and those will be something that you'll be able to have good conversation on. I'll have the key staff that are here to answer those questions that you might have as you, as you deliberate and determine whether or not you'd like to see that in the budget moving forward. I tentatively put on, on this list, you'll see we're March 30th, according to the Charter. That's the CIP deadline of when that needs to be presented, so I'll present that on the 17th. And then I tentatively put a, an additional special budget workshop on March 31st. After, at the workshop on the 17th, you can decide whether or not you want to keep that or would you rather go to the April 7th meeting? And that's when the Superintendent, myself, will be back. And this is where we provide, well, the City Manager will provide the actual final presentation of the budget. So feedback that you give me on the 17th and potentially on the 31st will help me determine where the, the City Manager budget will, will sit. As a reminder, the City Manager's final budget that's presented, if the council does not get to a solution on the budget by June 30th, that's the budget that goes into, into place. So, so I'll need that feedback at the 17th and also on the 31st, if that happens, to make sure we're putting together the right budget for you for consideration. That's also where you'll adopt the five-year CIP plan. At that meeting, you'll just be adopting the plan, it's not adopting the specific funding for the year. We'll do that when we present the FY26 budget. And that's when you'll have your hearings and you'll have those discussions. Currently, that's set for that first reading, April 22nd, and then the second reading by May 5th. Questions? Thoughts about this schedule?
Council Gary?
Thank, well, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, are you and Kelz, our, I'm sorry, I got to be proper here. Are Financial Director monitoring what's going on in Augusta with their budget woes? In case we may not get what we're expecting? As well as are you both monitoring what the federal government is doing? And how is what they're doing affecting any of the projects that we've got started or, or will start? How is that all going to fall into place?
So those are really excellent questions. The Manager is going to present more information regarding the federal components of the city budget here during the regular meeting. As everyone knows, there was a short period of time, a day and a half or so, where it looked like there was going to be immediate rescission of federal funding. That's been, at least for the moment, start. But the Manager and I felt it was really important for the council to understand.
important for the council to understand, given the current environment, where federal funds impact us, so there'll be a baseline understanding should be, should there be any federal budget reductions. Relative to the state budget, we're actively monitoring that. The, as we've talked about before, you know, both sides of the aisle and the legislature have indicated that they're supporting the 55% share for general purpose aid to education and continuing the 5% general revenue sharing. The Governor addressed that in her budget and the state has provided us with their estimates as they do every year in alignment with maintaining those. After that, I think that there's a lot of uncertainty about what's going to happen, both in the budget. The budget hearings are starting this week. So as we go forward over the next few weeks, we'll get a better understanding of what the Committees of Jurisdiction and the Appropriations Committee's thoughts are on the budget. There's lots of bills in to try to increase revenue that comes from the state down to the municipalities. I, I think for planning purposes that we should assume that none of those will ultimately, even if they are passed by the Committees of Jurisdiction and the Legislature, they're unlikely to be funded, so for planning purposes, we shouldn't assume we'll be getting additional revenue. We're just going to have to see what happens as the Legislature works the budget. As Counsel Gary's pointed out, there's a lot of uncertainty around that, although again, the two major items that impact us, there seems to be bipartisan support for continuing that.
Other comments or questions? Counsel Walker.
Thank you. Are we going to see departments at all come in and tell us what they think their real dreams are?
Yeah, your, your directive was to, the council as we, when we first met was to, to just hold existing programming, so, so to be nothing new in the budget. Anything that is new, we'll make sure I, I have the appropriate staff and it might be what's new meaning, what's the impact on utilities or what's the impact on another driver that we might have in the budget. So no, there's no, there's no plan to bring parade all the directors through to talk about what they presented to you last year. We'll just have those members that'll be here for any of the, that added list of items, they'll be here to talk specifically about that. And that can, you know, it's up to the council, but that's, that's the current plan.
Other questions or comments?
Just like the, like with Dan, for instance, Dan is kind of in a different position and you've done it with a couple others, I, I think I'd like to hear from them if you don't mind.
Yeah, the, so Dan will definitely be in when we walk through the CIP. And then those directors will be here for the CIP items as well because those will be obviously the new, new items. Just to, to build on what the, the Mayor had mentioned regarding state and some of that funding, I think that, you know, as, being very conservative in, if you recall when we put in the state revenue share in FY25, we did bring in an increase, had increased that last year because we had under, we had been under budgeting that for some time and, and we talked about not wanting to put added burden, burden on, on the taxpayer for an item that we knew we were bringing in additional revenue on. So we wanted to try to bring that in to a closer proximity to what our expectations were. So we brought that up and projections just came out today from the Treasurer's Office on state revenue share for FY26. And, you know, I think that it's, it's, you know, there's no crystal ball here, so it's going to be really difficult, but they came through with what they're anticipating. You know, my, what you'll see in my preliminary budget is holding the line on what we did last year. Yes, we saw a bit of a increase, we're, we're projecting, we still have a few more months left, but we're projecting to see a bit of an increase on what we had budgeted in revenue. But I would not feel comfortable going with their full projections based on where we are in the economy, what changes we're seeing on the federal level, what, what will those impacts be on tariffs as far as some of those changes? Those are things that we're monitoring or watching, but I just, you know, Kelsey and I met with Dennis and we started taking a look at these numbers and we just feel that it's probably in the best interest for the city to hold the line on this. As the Mayor said, we're, you know, we are very much involved in monitoring this, the Mayor's the co-leader of the, the Mayor's Coalition, I'm chairing the Main Service Center Coalition, we're having meetings with the lobbyist groups for those entities as we work through and, and my meeting was today, we spent a lot of time just talking about the state budget. We're putting in recommendations to make sure, our goal would be to hold the line on the 5% revenue share. There's some bills, as the, the Mayor said, that are being put forward that are, you know, looking to increase, you know, up to 5.5% next year and 6% the following year. Those are all great causes, but that money has to come from something else and we will be impacted on, you know, what are the, you know, the outcomes if something like that was to pass. I think that there are a lot of bills being brought forward currently. I think a lot of those bills will probably end up dying right on the appropriations table. There's just not enough funding that's going to be available to be able to move any of those bills. So I think the goal really is to try to hold the line. I think we're in that. That should be our, our directive, that should be what we're talking to our state representatives and having conversations with them. Let's try to hold the line on what we currently are receiving for revenues and, and hope for a good outcome.
Counsel Walker.
Yeah, one other thing, I know a few months back, a lot of us were interested in what roads are we going to tackle this year and what sidewalks, if, if there's any? And I thought we were going to try to get that done before this budget actually hit us right in the face because there's, I think, a few of us that have got some places where we'd like to see money being spent, kind of like what we did with the Merrill Road. And if they've got a whole plan of where they want to spend this money, I think we should have a look at it before we sit down that night to say, we're going to accept it or not accept it because it's nice to have a little time to digest some of these things.
Yeah, you're going to have that full presentation on the 17th. Remember, Counselor Platts had asked about the assessment of roads, so that work is just underway. We won't have that for this round of funding. It's just, there won't, the timing won't be there for that to be completed, they're, they're just getting underway now. However, we do have a list of, the roads that are being recommended don't require the assessment, we know just how poorly they are. And so, so that will be on the 17th, Counsel, where we'll have that presentation. Dan will talk about the roads that we are currently teeing up as these are viable projects to move forward with. I think that, you know, Kelsey and I will be spending a lot of time talking about just where do we believe CIP should land for us? We have some big projects coming up. We have already, through the Public Safety Bond, we've already drawn or appropriated five million out of that bond currently to begin some of the costs that we have coming. So you're seeing that in your debt, you'll see that in your debt service, that increase. So that's a sizable increase that we'll see in this debt service, somewhere as close to 17% probably, I think is where we're landing. And so, so I want to make sure we're in a good place as that continues to have those incremental increases each year. So that might means, we'll, I'll be, I'll be presenting a pretty lean capital budget for you as far as some of the department requests. And then to Counsel Walker's point, we need to have a really good conversation regarding road reconstruction. That's the, that's the line share of your budget. And so, and as Counsel Walker mentioned, you, you added at, at the, at the meeting the three million from Merrill Road and so you're seeing that in this debt service. So it's the five million from the Public Safety, plus it was somewhere as close to 12 probably for your total bond package, I believe. And so, so that's considerably higher than what we have done in the past.
Other questions, comments?
Just one, Counsel Platts.
Thank you, just a quick comment. I think we saw this last year, but it was, it was helpful to see, it was either a graphic or an Excel sheet with what bonds were being retired. So if, you know, we can see the three years out, maybe that's a standard piece of info that we get to see, but that was very helpful.
Yeah, you'll see that, you're going to see what, what's being retired, where we're at. We don't have any, you know, year or two ago, we had, oh, the, this building was coming off, the parking garage was coming off, I think the library might be the next one if it hadn't already come off, the library's probably the next one to come off, but we don't have any real large ones that are coming off, so it's more the annual CIPs that you'll see. Yeah, we have, that's a standard, we have that as part of our auditing package every year anyway, but we do, we do provide that for the budget, so that'll be part of our presentation.
Any other questions?
Just one quick follow-up regarding revenue sharing to remind the council that unlike the general purpose aid to education, which was driven off expenses and as appropriation by the legislature to fund that, revenue sharing is a percentage of the revenue that's taken in and it's a projection based on the Revenue Forecasting Committee numbers at this time. That's going to get updated here soon, but it's then month to month. So to the, the City Manager's comment, you have to, you have to be a little careful about what assumption we make about the revenue sharing numbers to make sure that we're not expecting money that doesn't come in because that projection may or may not hold up throughout the year as they reevaluate the revenue every month.
No other, other questions or thoughts from the council? If not, we will be adjourned until 7:00 PM for the regular City Council meeting. We have a couple.
Yeah, and...
No action.
Yeah, so, so the City Manager has raised a good point. We have two executive sessions scheduled that we may have time to process both of them, there's no action expected after either of these. So the first one is an executive session pursuant to win one MRSA Section 405 Sub 6C to discuss an economic development matter. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Weisner, seconded by Counsel Walker. Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? The council will be in executive session.
Twenty-five, Auburn City Council meeting will be called to order. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have the councilors introduce themselves, starting with Council Gary.
Good evening. I'm Belinda Gary, City Councilor at Large.
Rick Whiting, Ward One City Councilor. Trying not to infect anybody tonight.
Appreciate that, Councilor. Tim Cowan, Council of Ward Two.
Steve Milks, City Council Ward Three.
Good evening. Jeff Harmon, Mayor.
Good evening. Ben Weisner, City Council Ward Four.
Good evening. Leroy Walker, Councilor Ward Five.
Good evening. Adam Platts, at Large.
Evening. I'm Anaya Eggy. I'm a student representative.
Phil Kroll, City Manager.
Thank you. The first item of business tonight is consent items. Order zero eight zero two zero three two five. I've received a request from a resident to move this consent item off the consent calendar to new business. So this item will be taken up as a second item of business under new business. Next is the minutes, approval of the minutes for the January twenty-first, twenty twenty-four regular city council meeting. Are there any errors or corrections? Not seeing any. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Council Walker.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Cowan. But will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. The next item is presentation by the city manager updating the council on federal funding impact. Just a short background on this is members of the public probably know there was recently an executive order at the federal level curtailing significant amount of federal funding. There was a lot of activity around that by city staff to identify the immediate impact on the budget. While that was going on, that evening, federal court stayed that order and that was subsequently rescinded. Given the current environment that we all find ourselves in, however, it isn't clear that there won't be further executive action and/or budgetary changes by Congress. So I think it's important that the council and the public understand the various impacts that federal funding has on our municipal budget.
Sorry, Mayor. I think I handed my notes down the aisle here. I handed out my sheets, but I still don't see them. That's okay. I can, I know them pretty well. I'll go ahead and get started. So, Council, thanks for this opportunity to give you an update on where we are currently with these impacts. As you, as the mayor said, we had an initial announcement regarding the freeze and then quickly thereafter, we had that order rescinded. We, we operate with somewheres around, probably close to thirty different agencies for different types of funding that we receive federally through, either through a pass-through, the state, or we receive directly from, from a federal agency. Just so that you have an idea on what these impacts and these projects would have had on us, it was close to eighteen million dollars worth of projects that we are currently in one stage or another in the process on. That has everything to do with CDBG funding, the transportation funding as it pertains to certain projects. We immediately got notification from NOAA. This is the Littlefield DM removal. That project was immediately suspended as well as initiatives that we had in place with Homeland Security funding for police and fire initiatives. And, and then it also, all congressional delegated spending are CDS funds. So we have three million dollars allocated for the PAL Center. We have two and a half million dollars allocated for the Public Safety Building. And we have another three point nine million that's allocated for the Riverwalk expansion and improvements. So just the CDS projects, that's where they land. We currently have eight million dollars in the queue for the water sewer expansion that we've been speaking of regarding in South Auburn. That one is still in the queue, so that would not have been directly impacted unless it was removed. And so, you know, as, as we work through this, one thing that the staff is currently doing is assessing each one of these projects. How do they align with some of the directives that came from the memorandum, memorandum from the Office of OMB? And so we're working through those currently. We also would have seen impacts with LATC, our transportation system that we have in the city, especially as it pertains to funding for direct services. And so, so as you can imagine, there was a bit of a flurry when the suspensions came and we received multiple notifications from different federal agencies that our projects needed to be suspended and on hold. Safe Streets is another project that we worked through with AVCOG. And they administer our Safe Streets projects. That would have really impacted all of our matching. We match a lot of those funds for different projects and initiatives that are underway. And, and those were immediately suspended as well. We have since received, on January thirty-first, there was a court order that was put in place. Part of the court order was that each one of these agencies had to notify all of their partners that this, this order was adopted, basically reinstating all of the spending. However, there was a notation in that court order that allowed for agencies to make a determination on whether or not funds would be suspended. If they were, then it didn't, it could not be as a result of the OMB memo. Some agencies have chosen to pause still. And so, and we have not received any green light on continuing those. NRPA is a good example. This is a funding that we receive for our youth mentoring program at the PAL Center. And so we have not received a green light to proceed with, with that funding. Some of that might be that we just have not received it from the federal agency at this point. But according to court order, we should have received all those by nine AM this morning. And that's when most of the notifications were coming in from the federal agencies. So our staff and team will continue working with their counterparts that are at the federal level that have worked through this to ensure that we continue staying apprised of any changes or impacts that we'll see. Currently, we do not believe that this would have impacted any of our ARPA funding. As you know, some of our capital projects, we've used ARPA funds. And then we also have other funding sources that we've cobbled together for different projects. What we will be doing is we will be drawing down the funds that we have less control over to ensure that we are able to do that. Immediately when the order came out, our team went to work on drawing down any and all funds we had until, I think we got word around one PM, we had till five PM to make any drawdowns. We immediately started doing that. As you can imagine, the entire country was, and so the entire systems crashed. So there was no drawing down of funds. We didn't have a lot to draw down anyway because we do this, the Finance Department does this on a regular basis. We don't allow the money to just sit. Well, as soon as it's available, we're drawing that down to make sure we have control of those funds and we're able to pay our vendors and continue the projects moving forward. So we, we're continuing monitoring this. The Finance Department, our grants manager, and the city managers team and our directors that work direct, that work very closely with our federal partners are ensuring that we are monitoring this and continue to ensure that those projects can continue if possible. So originally, the memo gave agencies, federal agencies, till February tenth to repack, report back on how these allocations aligned with the executive orders that have been distributed so far. And so I anticipate that to continue, even though there's the, the order. I'm sure those agencies are working through some of those executive orders to determine how best they align. The, and I believe that as we've talked with some of our federal partners, we believe regardless of some of the executive orders, we should not see drastic impacts for certain funding sources like transportation. And we shouldn't see clawback, I guess you could say, for some of the CDS funding. Those should, should be continuing, but there's no guarantees on any of that. So we'll continue monitoring and I'll continue reporting back.
Questions from the council? So just a few follow-up questions in broad terms on an annual basis on the municipal budget. This eighteen million is about a third of the budget.
Of the budget.
And there are some other areas you didn't touch on that could have substantial impacts. As example, the original orders included reductions or elimination of certain Medicaid payments which would have a substantial impact on us because it's a largest revenue stream for our EMS system, right? Is that correct?
That's correct. I think we've, we've been receiving some mixed messages on whether or not that have an impact. But absolutely, that could, that could potentially impact our EMS services.
And the items that you were talking about, that's on the municipal side, correct?
Yes.
So perhaps, Council Platts, you might get some similar information from the school committee for us because things that come to mind right away that are direct percentage of the special education money, I think it's seven percent, flows through because of the IAD, the Individuals with Disability Act. It's important for people, when you're thinking through this, is that some of these proposed budget reductions did not include a companion elimination of the statutory requirement to provide the services. So special education would be a good example of this. The money might have stopped, but pursuant to law, you would have still had to have provided the services without the money. And then things like school lunches. So I think as we work through this, it's important to identify these because these types of budget reductions could have a really serious impact on some of the services that we provide. Other, other questions?
I was just gonna add, so on that day, the superintendent and I spent a decent amount of time together on the phone talking through some of those items. She had not received any direction from DOE at that time because it was all still very early on in the process. But those are the items that we talked about on those impacts and, and ensuring that delivery of service continues.
Other questions? Council Cowan.
Similar to what you were just alluding to, Mr. Mayor, in terms of if there are reductions to services related to general assistance and that mandate maintains, would we then be having to pay more?
So, so general assistance is a state, is a state program. There are other activities that business and community development engage in that are federally funded. As example, one that comes to mind right away is the lead abatement program. So there, there are some of the, some of those programs are federally funded, but GA is state funded.
Yeah, the, the lead abatement, the home funds is another area. And, and keep in mind, we have staff that are in those departments that are funded through the, those federal funds. And, and the most recently, the, the loan for one twenty-one Mill Street is also part of, part of that funding source.
Another thing to keep in mind, that while it doesn't directly impact the council or the budget is Auburn Housing Authority. As this was going on, I had some conversations with the director. And of course, there's substantial money for the Espinade, Roke Block, Barker, Northern Ave, all the Section Eight vouchers. So there could be some really serious impacts that would affect housing availability should those funds be curtailed. Other, other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Manager, for the update. We'll move on to the next item, which is the first open session of the evening. Members of the public invited to address the council on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. Please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Hello. Evan Seer, one twenty-two Granite Street. We recently had a couple of snowstorms that I don't think anyone would characterize as big. And they were more of a nuisance. However, I happen to work at the school and I happen to live in a neighborhood that's in proximity where students would be walking from. They're required to walk. There's no bus service. And during both storms, sidewalks are not plowed. And so you end up seeing kids, you know, I work at the high school. These are teenagers. They're still gonna wear their sneakers through four inches of snow, right? But then you also see them making the decision to walk on the road as well. And I'm not sure there's anything that could be done in the immediate future, but I wonder if the council would consider, or if the, if the manager would consider talking with Public Works. I know that those plowing schedules are all planned out ahead of time. And so to go change that now is, is a big task. But perhaps to in the future, consider making sure, consider creating a program to make sure that sidewalks within walkable distance receive priority for plowing. Just because, like I said, and going to school in the morning and seeing them walk through the snow, but also on the road. So, thanks.
Mr. Manager, do you want to comment on the prioritization methodology at Public Works?
Sure. So, yeah, I think that there is a, there is a plan in place. Sometimes it has to do with the timing of the storm too. But I think that the, we roll out staff at different times based on the storm. Our priority obviously is the roads, but then we roll staff out that are on some of those. those roads that have, that are priority one, that some of those staff members are the first ones that roll out as far as sidewalk removal, uh, snow removal. But yeah, that's always a challenge. I think that we, and a lot of it has to do with that timing. You know, I think a good example is this storm completed at six AM. We're not going to roll that staff out in time for the sidewalk clearing, but sometimes it does go even longer, especially if, if we have a breakdown with any of our sidewalk equipment. But they, I think, you know, we'll continue having that conversation. I'll have a conversation with the Public Works Director, I'd like to know what our timing is. We do monitor timing as far as who's assigned and where, what areas are they hitting. So I'd like to probably dig into that, see if, how we're doing on the last couple of storms. As Mr. Seer mentioned, is, are we hitting some of our targets to make sure we're, we're getting those, because we do have sidewalk priorities as well. And so not only do we have road priorities, we have sidewalk priorities, and definitely in the areas where we have a lot more walkers for some of our schools. So, so appreciate that, and I'll, I'll dig into that a little bit further.
Any other member of the public who'd like to address the council? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
Hi, Deana Chapman, 40 Vivian Street, Auburn. I have great concerns about, and I'm sure I'm not the first one to bring this to the council's attention, on the corner of South Main and Bolster Heights, there's a white apartment building that, not only since we brought up winter, but in the summertime is very dangerous, to allow this type of business that's going on in this driveway? So there's always, anywheres from ten to fifteen cars parked alongside of the street, a lot of them not knowing where they're going, so they're like doing maybe five miles an hour, and then they just do a U-turn right, right in front of you, or the cars backing out of that driveway. It looks like they have a mechanic, something going on there. There's always like six cars in the driveway, tons of them on the side of the road. So this last storm, I don't know if we had a parking ban for Auburn this last storm, but it's just a mess. So there's so many cars there, none of them got towed. So now, when you, now you're creating more of a mess by them leaving and coming back. But at any given time, there's strict, there's honestly a business going on there. And not a safe, a safe business either, like they're on these, in the driveway, they're on these lifts that you just bring the tires up onto them, and they're working on these vehicles, pulling motors, doing, it, it's really a nuisance for that area, and it's right on a four-way, like an intersection where you have people coming from Loring and Bolster, and also South Main. And when you crest that hill coming from the fire station heading down South Main, that's where the, so many accidents. I was on my scooter this summer, and this gentleman literally did not see me, he just did a U-turn right from the driveway, he just about clipped me. Good thing I had, I was just passing Loring, so I had time to swerve off, or he would have hit me. I'd really like the city to investigate what's going on over there, because I can't believe that we're allowing something in this type of neighborhood to go on like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, could you ask code enforcement to investigate and see if the business activity complies with code, and ask the police department during any snow emergencies to see if they could check that area?
Absolutely.
Great, thank, thank you. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to address the council? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
I'm Arlo Driggs at 65 Whitman Spring Road. There is a specific spot on a little hill right outside of that road, sort of peels off of West Auburn Road, but it's this hill that has this tiny little bit of visibility that you can see a car coming from the left, that it's just a brief second where you can see them. But I think if there were to just be some sort of little sign pointing down the hill with a little motion sensor, just to let people know that there's a car coming, I think that might be definitely beneficial and avoid some, some sort of tragedy, because every time I pull out of there in the morning, there's always something right there that's, could be pretty bad, but that's, that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to address the council? Please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. Move on to unfinished business. First item is ordinance 01012125, property tax assistant program. This will be a second reading and a public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Council Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Walker. If any member of the public would like to make comments and address the council on this agenda item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Discussion by the council? Counsel ready for the question? The vote will be by roll call, the clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Wisner?
Yes.
Counsel Walker?
Yes.
Counsel Platts?
Yes.
Counsel Gary?
Yes.
Counsel Whiting?
Yes.
Counsel Cowan?
Yes.
Counsel Melz?
Yes.
Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to new business. The first item is order 09020325, approval to encumber from the general fund for fire apparatus. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Counsel Wisner, seconded by Counselor Cowan. Perhaps before we open up public comment, Mr. Manager, do you want to provide some background on this?
Thank you, Mayor. For those who may have been involved in the FY25 budget and CIP workshop, we did identify that the turnaround on ordering fire apparatus is now up to close to three years for us to be able to receive an engine. And we did approve the CIP with this item included, and it was listed under special financing. As we, as we shared, at that time, we would be working with a bond agent, work with the vendor to see what options we might have available to us. Part of the concern is that if we bond too early, we're now paying interest on this bond while we're just waiting for, for delivery. The actual, I think our first payment on this apparatus wouldn't be until October of 2028, before we actually have to make our first payment. And so the recommendation from the finance director through her conversations with bond agent and auditing would be that we would encumber these funds, knowing that we would not spend them on the general fund, however, we would encumber them, and then you would see this in the CIP in the future for, for the funding allocation to come from the bond. Kelsey, anything I leave out on there?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it's understood that this, vendors are requiring us to submit a purchase order, and that shows that we either have or will have the funds for this purchase, even though the first invoice isn't until 2028. So in order for us to have that purchase order, we have to hold the funds or encumber them through that purchase order in our software, our financial software, so that would be why we're trying to encumber them from general fund, even though we're not actually expending them from that general fund.
And Ms. Earl, what, what line is this coming from the general fund? Is this on an allocated fund balance?
This would be unassigned fund balance temporarily, until that comes back in front of you for allocation.
Thank you. If there's any member of the public, excuse me, who'd like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, public comment is closed. Discussion by the council? Counsel Cowan? Counsel Platts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess this is more for me to be educated, but I see no limit on the amount that could be encumbered, which makes sense because you're not actually spending the money. But is there a scenario where encumbering a large amount could have a detrimental effect to our budget? Should there be a limit placed on this?
Yeah, yeah, there certainly would be. So if the CIP that was approved, was approved at one million, we can look, I think it was one point, maybe one point one, somewhere's in there. So it would not exceed that amount. However, we, we know where we're coming at when we place the order, we'll know what the amount will be. It's actually, one of the reasons why it doesn't have the amount is that we, we'll be doing a trade on a current apparatus that we have, reduce that amount by that trade amount. So we're probably looking in the ballpark of around six hundred thousand, I believe.
That's correct. So it was originally approved for one point one. The reason, like Phil said, is that we, or sorry, city manager said, is that we do not intend to exceed that one point one, because that was what was approved, but we don't have the exact number based on that trade, and we haven't received that yet.
Counsel Cowan?
Just wanted to point out for, for the public, the other piece that made a lot of sense to me, in addition to the purchase order, is that bond funds have to be expended within three years. So any delay on the delivery of that truck would put those funds in jeopardy. So this makes a lot of sense in terms of this is really an essential move for us.
That's correct. We may have to re-insign or re-encumber those funds for something different if there was a delay in that order fulfillment.
This is a trend, so it's something we're going to continue seeing. We're working through that right now, currently with LATC, when we look to purchase a bus, some of those buses are three-plus years, and so currently, and so, and the same thing as it pertains to some of our Public Works equipment, we're looking at some of our equipment there, where we're over two years on some of those orders. So when we come before you, we talk about the CIP replacement schedule, you'll be seeing two dates with that, one when we should be ordering, and then one, one when we expect delivery. I think that this fire engine apparatus, I think it's, Kelsey, when's our, our first payment's October of 2028, but that's what, ninety days out from delivery?
Correct.
So our first, so they're, they're building this under that PO, understanding that those funds are obligated. Our first payment to them isn't until ninety days before delivery, which has been pretty, that's been standard practice.
So currently, if this is going to be an ongoing trend, currently, we have no line in the budget to encumber these. I mean, maybe this is the way to do it, which is as the occasions arise, just use the unallocated fund balance, and we flip to the bond, it goes back into the fund balance, but it, it creates a risk to make sure that there's going to be fund balance money there as we do, as we work through the budget and potential allocations from that fund over time, to make sure that we're looking out a number of years to make sure we're going to have money in there. So I, I'm not sure of the accounting method, but somehow we need to make sure that we're identifying these funds that we're going to have to encumber in the future based on our CIP plan.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's, this will be the new discussions, as we talk about CIP and how we, how we plan for this in the future. There is an accounting for this, because as soon as you make that approval and we make the order, that generates the PO, which then auditors now monitor, and where is that line item coming from, how it's designated within the unallocated amount, because it's not at that, that fund balance level yet, because it's still within that, that current fiscal year. So when you see your, your fund balance, when the auditors come in in the next couple of months and, and do the FY24, if it was, if they were presenting for this, you would, you, that would already be incorporated, you would not see that as part of your fund balance, because your fund balance already had that drawn out, because it was already pulled on a bond. But then you're right, Mayor, you will then see that come back. So the tracking of that is critical, as we then look for that larger purchase in the future that's termed out.
Right, and my concern was more about, these are going to come up. We need to make sure there's unallocated fund balance available and a sufficient amount to be able to encumber against, to be able to cut POs for the equipment that we need. Other, other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none? Counsel ready for the question? This vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative, none in the negative, the motion's adopted. The next item is order 08020325, appointing Maureen Hopkins to the planning board for a term that expires 11/28, as nominated by the appointment committee. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've moved that we appoint Maureen Hopkins to the planning board for a term that expires 11/28, as nominated by the appointments committee.
Has been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Cowan. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council relative to this agenda item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Good evening, Dave Trask, 89 Partridge Lane. As the only applicant who attended the appointment committee's January 21st meeting, I had the opportunity to be interviewed and asked about both my experience and my strong belief in ward representation. Tonight, I'd like to expand on both. First, listen to this.
If I can interrupt you?
Yes.
I'm not sure where you're headed, Mr. Trask, but the question that is before the council is regarding a particular nominee. You can certainly speak to that nomination, but as has been the practice in accordance to the rules, it's not appropriate to be comparing amongst applicants. The question is to the nominee, not whether one applicant for this position out of a number of applicants is more suited for that position.
All right, so it sounds like the council is not interested in listening to their constituents, at which point, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to address the council on this item? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
Hi, my name's Anita Chapman, 4 Marion Drive, Auburn. And I'm questioning this, I'm not questioning the nomination, I'm questioning the process, mainly that if this person, as capable as she is, gets on, that means Ward Five is not, doesn't have a representation. That really bothers me. I'm passionate about this. I have to thank the two counselors that got back to me regarding my emails. I just want to know why we don't have representation for every ward. Like I said, maybe that's something, somebody can stir up conversation, can debate. Could this be put on the back burner for a little bit, and this can be discussed, so we can find out if that is a possibility to get a counselor, I mean, not a counselor, a planning board member on every ward? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public who'd like to address the council? Please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Deana Chapman, 40 Vivian Street, Auburn, Maine. So I also, this doesn't sit well with me, I understand that, it just doesn't make sense. So on so many other boards and committee of the city, we have representation from every ward. So my concerns would be, why doesn't the planning board, and I understand the bylaws, I read them, I get that it's not in the bylaws. I believe it should be in the bylaws, and I know in the past, people have fought for that. And I understand that the planning board is for the city, the whole city. They oversee the whole city, not just wards. But with a few counselors not getting back to somebody from Ward Five that have written them several letters, that concerns me. Are we really for the whole city? If we were, any councilman would respond back to, doesn't matter what ward you live in, you would respond back to them. So I thank you for the ones that did. My other thing is- that did. My other thing is, is that I would ask that, well, for one, I don't get why we're going to lose a value member that has been on the board and been part of the process. I know that Maureen already sits on the board. So to take and switch, switch them out, to me, really doesn't make sense. You still have the people sitting on the same board. So I would ask the council to reconsider your votes. Really look at what you're doing. I get that it's not in the bylaws, but look what you're doing as far as representation to Ward 5 and the citizens. I believe we would have three members on that board from one ward. We'd have one from another ward and another one leaving Ward 5 unrepresented. And that doesn't sit well with me, nor does it sit well with other citizens in Ward 5, especially with what's coming up. And I get that a lot doesn't come to the council. A lot of the Planning Board makes decisions right there, and then there's other things that do come to the council. My concern would be the ones that don't come to the council because I have faith in you guys. I have faith that if everything from the Planning Board came to you guys and we could talk it out and bounce things off each other, I'd be all set with that. What my concern is the ones that don't come to, to the council. And to me, I just don't feel that that's fair, public, for the rest of us. But thank you. I'd ask you to reconsider your vote and, and keep it the way it is. I think Maureen does a very well job where she is and where she sits, and I think that Dave does, has been a great representative for Ward 5. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the council? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
May I ask a clarifying question?
I give you some leeway, Mr. Trask, to come forward a second time since you didn't really offer anything the first time you kicked the podium.
I greatly appreciate that, and I will, I'll cut kind of down through this. Because I feel that Auburn's neighborhoods each have unique challenges. And without diverse geographic representation, as we've heard earlier, decisions may unintentionally prioritize some areas over others. This perpetuates disparities and hinders Auburn's overall growth. The American Planning Association states that inclusive representation ensures planning processes address the diverse needs of the population. A diverse board prevents blind spots and helps balance trade-offs in planning decisions. For example, rezoning for industrial use may benefit one ward while creating traffic or environmental issues for another. A geographically diverse board is more likely to recognize and address these impacts fairly. Finally, representation boosts civic engagement. When residents see their neighborhoods represented, they're more likely to participate in planning discussions. Research shows that diverse representation directly increases public involvement, making government more transparent and accountable. In conclusion, ward diversity is not just a procedural issue, it is a cornerstone of fair and effective governance. It assures balanced decision-making, prevents unintended bias, and fosters trust between residents and local government. If Auburn wants to grow equitably and solve key challenges like housing and infrastructure, we need a Planning Board that represents all its citizens, not just certain wards or professions. I urge you to uphold this principle and ensure every voice is heard in shaping Auburn's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to approach the podium and address the council on this issue? Provide your name and address.
Hello. Yes, Evan Seer, 122 Granite Street. I've been keeping myself apprised of this, and I understand the arguments around the desire to require ward representation. I understand counselors' arguments to the contrary, stating that it's not a requirement. I guess I don't understand why the council wouldn't seek to promote that idea. It is in a council adopted document from 2017, was adopted under Mayor LaBonte, that diversity in ward representation is something that, that would be considered. And again, I understand the council's not required to do that. It just seems like it would be good practice when there is a candidate available from a ward, because we don't always have that. We don't always get someone from every ward. So when, when we do, it would seem like a, a good thing to encourage that. I guess the other thing that I'm struggling with is that a vote to appoint the current nominee changes the makeup of the Planning Board, not by adding a member, but by removing a member from the Planning Board. And I guess I've, I've been involved for about a decade and a half at the city, and I, I've never seen that happen. But what I do see happen is that when councils decide to do something, people take note. And so subsequent councils and counselors learn from what previous councils do. I worry that it sort of sets up this precedent that the council would weigh the notion that two members of the Planning Board have different qualifications, and that someone who has served on the Planning Board would be less qualified today than they were when they were first appointed. It worries me that it leaves it open to politics. And even if it doesn't become political, it has the perception of being political. I mean, after all, one could say, yes, Maureen looks highly qualified. Of course, it's hard to tell what qualified means because there's sort of this shadow behind the scenes. I don't think anyone on the council could put a document in front of me that outlines what qualifications are weighed for the Planning Board. There are none, so it's sort of arbitrary. But she certainly has experience, enough so that she's been appointed to the Planning Board, right? But it kind of creates this, this, this sense that for some reason, because she currently sits in an associate seat, that her role would somehow be less, and that the council would seek to elevate her role on the Planning Board by moving her to a full seat. And that also sort of sits poorly with me. Having served on there for, I, I served for just shy of 12 years, it would really bother me if someone told me while I was serving that an associate member who was sitting next to me was less than a full member somehow. And I'm not sure I can pull together my thoughts because I know I've either come to the end of my three minutes or I've exceeded. I know I've said a few different things, but it just, I just don't understand why we would vote to decrease the membership on the Planning Board, unless you guys have some other candidate that you're pulling up the pipeline. But aside from that, I ju, it just doesn't, seems like bad precedent for optics. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's any other member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any public comment, we close. Discussion by the council. Counsel Wything.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see Maureen's very, very qualified in regards to her resume here. I just had a question. I don't know if somebody here can answer it for me. I understand that she is an attorney with vast experience within land use, municipal, right away. The question is, since she's an attorney dealing with, on the Planning Board, has there ever been in the past, since she's been on the Planning Board before, where she can offer legal opinion on a case that comes up to where we need legal opinion? Can she offer that? Is one of, and I have a couple more questions as well. That's just starting.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll give you my opinion on that, and then the manager can jump in. I don't think any member of a board or committee, whether they're attorney or not, can provide legal advice to the city. Should there be questions from the Planning Board from any member or from staff engaged in the process, the city attorney would be the cognizant body that would provide any legal opinions or advice. Mr. Mayor, would you add to that?
I, I think I would just say, you know, it's, each member brings their own experience and knowledge, but that's not necessarily binding legal opinion. And so the city would, would seek that through the city attorney.
Thank you. With that, so there's no advantage to having an attorney besides their skills compared to somebody that has been serving on the committee for a number, numerous years. I don't know how long Mr. Trask has served on this committee before on that. And this is another question for the committee members that were, that had served on the Appointment Committee, where there's no, by having somebody that can give a legal opinion through this adding to the board, and where Maureen was already on the board, you guys here, I do see Mr. Seer's point of now removing somebody that was on the committee and switching out, now we have one less person on the committee. Can you give me any insight to your guys' why, why that happened of appointing Maureen over Mr. Trask, where he was on there and she was still on the board at that time? Thank you for your comments, or anybody that can contribute. Thank you.
Counsel Whitey?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have a few comments. First of all, I'd like to thank all the application, applicants. We had a number of very well-qualified applicants. I've never seen anything like it. That's a good thing, and I appreciate that. Secondly, the committee, and, and every committee that does this has a tough job, and there's always somebody unhappy with its recommendation. That's the nature of the beast. There's nothing currently in the ordinance requiring particular ward representation. In fact, if you look at the Comp Plan Committee, we've got three people from New Auburn. In the past, Ward 1 wasn't represented on the Planning Board. So if you look at that, I think it's clear that this board does not require, you're not representing wards, you're representing the ordinance of the city. And in terms of transparency, we have a very rigid requirement for the Planning Board, whenever there's a development that comes to the city, that people within 500 feet are notified by mail. And in my experience, from what I've seen of New Auburn, New Auburn is rarely underrepresented at public meetings. I went to a meeting at Walton School where there must have been 120 people, and it was word of mouth, whatever, maybe public notice. But the people of New Auburn do not have trouble making their thoughts known. So I don't think that's an issue. And I don't think this is something we can debate now. I'm certainly willing to talk about it in the future. But in past experience, I was on a ward with somebody who was appointed because they were from a ward and they really weren't qualified. I'm not saying that in this case, but I'm not sure we want to go back to those days. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council?
Would there, like, just hypothetical, would there be a disadvantage to requiring each ward to have some, or an applicant, or requiring representation from each ward?
Well, I think there may or may not be. I don't think that's the question in front of the council tonight. And I guess I would say the same thing I said 13 months ago when this same exact question came up, which is, in a previous appointment process, there was discussion by some counselors about whether they thought the appointment order needed to be adjusted. And I guess I would say what I said then, which is if there's counselors that think that it needs to be amended, they can bring forth a proposal, and the council can consider that and thoroughly debate the merits of that proposal and decide whether or not the appointment process needs to be amended. But that's not the, the question in front of the council tonight. Counsel Walker?
Thank you. A couple of things. One is, I, I totally disagree with removing Dave and putting another person in that place. And my reason is, is Ward 5. And I think we should have a representative from Ward 5. And I guess I'll leave the rest because it's all been said. I think I said it a couple of weeks ago. It's, it's really a disadvantage for Ward 5, not having Dave in that seat. Second, I'm really ashamed of Belinda. She comes from Ward 5, has lived in Ward 5 most of her life, and to vote against a person that comes from your ward is a sin.
I'll remind you of the rules, and directly attacking other counselors is a violation of the rules. Is there any other counselor that has a question or comment about this particular agenda item? Counsel Milk?
Yeah. Having sat on the Appointment Committee previously, I, I'm, I'm very disappointed with, with the way that this has come about. I think this was a win-win situation if you appoint Dave and you keep Maureen on. It's very common that someone goes, they do a term as, as an associate, and then there's an opening, and then the next time. But this person, nothing against Ms. Hopkins, was there for two me, had two meetings, one of which she missed. And Dave has been a highly valuable person on the Planning Board, has been respected by everyone. What I see is that he made the mistake of a dissenting opinion. And, and so what, I am incredibly disappointed that this Appointment Committee didn't have both of these people on the Planning Board. Everybody knows that's what should have been done. And, and I'm not going to say anything else because out of respect for this body, but I am incredibly disappointed with these three counselors on the Appointment Committee. I think it's a disgrace what they did.
I would remind you, Counsel Milk, as I did with Counsel Walker, that's a violation of the rules to directly attack other counselors in debate. Is there any other questions or comments? Counsel Cowan? Counsel Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, and then I have some comments. So if I, first, my question is, what is the difference between the associate member and a member? An associate member is a non-voting member unless, so that, so let me clarify this. There's seven full members and there's two associate members. The two, two associate members can participate in the discussion. The two associate members are not allowed to vote. Unless there is a full member that is absent, then the chair rotates through the associate members and they act as a full member at that particular meeting. If two were absent, they would both be acting as full members at that meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of comments. I, I think that, to me, explains why Maureen Hopkins opted to put in an application that she feels she wants to be a voting member on the Planning Board. I think the due process, the Appointment Committee is charged with, with considering folks and, and they, as we heard earlier from Counsel Whitey, there were five very strong candidates. I heard Mr. Seer say that it feels like, to him, in his perspective, that by not selecting Mr. Trask, that we're now viewing Mr. Trask as less valued or less qualified than he was when he was selected a couple of years ago. I don't think that's the case. I think perhaps he was, because they're all very qualified, they were looking at what the qualifications were of all the applicants, and they wanted to move forward with Ms. Hopkins. While they wouldn't, while you wouldn't have a standing bona fide determination as, from a legal opinion, she does bring that insight to debate and discussion in the Planning Board that could potentially be valuable. I, I think, having talked with some of the, the members in the appropriation, the Appointment Committee, that that was a factor. I've heard from, from many people, thank you, Anita, for your, your emails, and I've thought a lot about the pros and cons of whether we should consider, this council should consider, changing the requirements and, and putting a higher emphasis on... requirements and putting a higher emphasis on best as possible ensuring there's representation from all wards on the planning board at all times. However, I don't think that it's a super urgent issue that we should have to mix that into this discussion tonight. Tonight, the question is whether or not we are approving or not approving what the person that was nominated. I'm not convinced entirely that it's, that the geography should be the most important or as important, but I am willing to have a conversation about the pros and cons because maybe it should be. And I would love to have that conversation, but I think that conversation needs to happen starting in a workshop and have some dialogue. I think there would be changes and things that would be required to do so. I could, I imagine, based on the knowledge that we know, that there have been in the past imbalance of the applications that are submitted to the appointment committee in terms of where people live. So if we make this a requirement, it could become something that just needs to be addressed. That's just one example. And I will also, again, just emphasize that if we do feel that it's important that all wards have representation, we can debate that. And there are three people that are terming out at the end of the year. And so there's the opportunity for Ward Three to have someone join. There's also the opportunities for someone from Ward Five to take over the seat, should we appoint Maureen Hopkins as this an associate non-voting member. And finally, I will state, restate what Counsel Whitey said. For the past year, there has not been a representative resident from Ward One on the planning board. To my knowledge, and this is what I would like to have debate and understand, is have there been some challenges because of that? Prior to that, Ward One only had an associate member from 2020 to 2023. So it's not, it doesn't, we can't always balance it. Perhaps we can try to, but I don't know that it really is the most critical piece, but I'd like to learn and know more about that in future discussions. Thank you.
Counsel Milk?
An associate member is not mute. So their opinion, they can give their opinion and they can state their opinion and they're often talked to in meetings. It's a complete fallacy to say that, oh, we need that person to get their legal opinion, that they're perfectly capable of giving that opinion as an associate. We are, we, this is, these are citizens that are volunteering for the most part. And when they do a good job and they're highly regarded, that should be the preeminent reason that when you have multiple people, and in this situation, we could have both good people, and I am just beside myself, and I know you're going to vote with them too, and I'm disappointed in you.
If Mr. Trask wanted to apply for the associate member, he could.
Other counsel wife?
Thank you. The only reason I just speak again is just the question I asked, just the planning, the appointment board. It just wasn't answered. I appreciate Mr. Whitey's comments. It is a very difficult decision and being on the planning board, you have very qualified individuals. And I'm just trying to get some insight that can help me with the vote that's coming up. And, you know, you had, Maureen was already associate member. She can have asked, her opinion was there before. And you had another very qualified candidate, again, that was on the planning board and a voting member. And I just would like your guys' insight. I feel when I asked it before, it wasn't answered. You know, I, that just would help me going forward because you have somebody before. And I understand we're not taking questions from them because they're not up for consideration, but you have one considering that was a voting member and you have one that wasn't, but they were able to have their voice. They could say their voice. And now all of a sudden, one is moving up to a voting member, and now we're losing somebody that had vast experience that was on there. You do have people from the public that are saying that there's issues with ward representation. I've said that about other issues and I agree with that statement, but that's a different subject for another day. So I would, again, my question is, can you please, those from the appointment board, provide insight on Maureen, knowing that I asked my question before about cannot give legal opinion? So I thank you to the manager and mayor for answering that question on where she was on the board before and now no legal opinion on David who has vast experience, but why Maureen and now taking David off? If you can give me just some insight in that. And I appreciate any on that. Thank you very much.
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the last few months, when we've had appointments come up to make, when we've made recommendations and they've come up for votes, it seems like just about every meeting or every other meeting that it's brought up that this person can't be on it and we got to put it back out to make sure we find a qualified candidate. We did it when we were trying to put a person on the Auburn Housing Board. I mean, we threw it back out and we only had that one applicant again. We did it a month ago for another candidate. We put it, we threw it back out for more bid. Oh, we did it for the age-friendly group when we thought that we weren't the candidate that had applied that were good, but they weren't specific in the areas that they would complement the current committee. So we put that out for another vote and we found a candidate that made the right fit. When this appointment of Maureen come up, it was questioned again about how we, why we picked this one person and we put, and it went back to committee. The process was open all these times. Anybody that could, wanted to put in a application, could do it across the board. We didn't single out, you only had to be from one ward or another ward. So when we reviewed these applicants, they were all judged on their fair merits. I chose Maureen based on her qualifications, whether or not she was a lawyer and I knew she can't give the city a legal opinion, but she can look in, look ahead, that something maybe our good staff couldn't. I mean, they might have overlooked something and she could have brought that expertise to point out something so we wouldn't have to go to a city lawyer, I mean, our city's lawyer, or stall a process. I did not vote against Mr. Trask, and I know can bring up possible, I mean, things, just because he was a descending vote. I only voted on the qualifications. Anybody, any counselor that did not like the fact that on any of our appointments didn't want ward bounds. At one point in time, it was, but because we couldn't find enough ward representation, we loosened the restrictions and didn't have a pinpoint, a pinpoint thing that says you got to do ward participation. The thing is, we've had months for any counselor to come forward with an idea to put something on the council agenda to discuss this, whether we should make rules to change how we are appointing people, perhaps even go back to all the committees and boards we have to see what the makeup is to maybe move forward if that's what the council would like in order to have everything, everybody ward participation.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Counsel Platt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I guess I'd like to say my piece. Number one, I appreciate everybody who's been involved in this process. I know that it's been contentious, but I know that we're working through it. So I appreciate that. During the last meeting or two meetings ago, I was the one who placed a vote to postpone this, to bring it back up. I felt I needed more time to think about this, to go through the process. I've done that. I've thought about this and my mind has not changed. My original vote was in support of Maureen and it'll continue to be so. Ben, to answer your question, the reason that I support Maureen was because of Maureen's relevant experience. And I feel that in a position that we could elevate Maureen to, as Counsel Gary said, it puts Maureen in a position where that experience and that knowledge, though not a formal legal opinion, of course, she can't do that, there might be value. And there might be value that I feel the planning board may benefit from. And that's why I made the decision. I appreciate the constituents who've reached out. I do my best to reach, you know, speak to everyone that I can. I'd also like to thank Mr. Trask. He's put himself up in front of this process and twice now we haven't nominated him. It clearly shows his integrity. I'm sure you're a wonderful person. I know I'm not supposed to address you directly, but, you know, this is the process and this, I'm new to this, but what I've been told is that you follow the process. And so that's what I'm doing to the best of my ability. My constituents' response about having ward representation, that is not lost on me. If we need to workshop this, if we need to talk about this, let's do it. If ward representation is a real issue for our constituents, let's deal with this. But we can't deal with it every time in the 11th hour after the appointment committee has been asked to do its job. I understand these are contentious and I'm not saying let's sweep this under the rug and not talk about it. It's not what I'm saying. But there's a time and a place to change policy, change bylaws. I'm happy to have that debate with anybody. And I don't think you guys could predict, you know, what I'd support. I'm, I don't necessarily feel one way or the other as far as how the bylaws should be in the future. But as they stand now, I believe we've done our job to the best of our ability. Again, if you're not one of the people who gets appointed or reappointed, it sucks. I was on a committee in Auburn and my entire committee got relegated to a working group. I didn't even have a say. And that happens and it sucks. And again, to Mr. Trask, I appreciate you being a part of this process. I appreciate your participation in the city of Auburn thus far and I hope you will again. I don't believe this is as political of a process as some of those who are making those claims would say. And I am open to dealing with this in the future, talking about this more with constituents and other council members. And my vote has not changed and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Counsel Eisen.
Thank you. I'd just like to say after that, thank you very much, Belinda, for answering me, Rick and Adam. I appreciate that. I, and in my closing, I just, my kind of thought is, I understand you guys' comments and I respect that, but she was already an associate member and can contribute to the conversation and was there. I appreciate those that showed up and participate. You had a great, great amount of candidates that were very, very, very qualified. Hard thing for me is she was already on the board. She could contribute vast amounts to it. So that's kind of where I'm having a little bit of a hard, hard thing of changing out or moving up her to a voting member. She was already on the board, could contribute and have a say to that and that. And there was, there is a list. So I appreciate you guys, your time on the appointment board and thank you for answering my question. I appreciate it.
Other questions or comments? Counsel Collins?
Just, I think it's a valid point. I hadn't really thought of, you know, a person's already on, should they even be encouraged to submit an application for a different part of that board? Again, that's not part of the process and the current statutes. And so I'm voting in favor of this because of the process, Counsel Milk, not because I have anything out against Mr. Trask. I've had some great conversations and I appreciate all that you've done on the planning board. To me, it's the process. Right now, the process is there's an appointments committee and they are charged with coming up with who they think is the best nomination. You want to have that and you can vote no against this, but to say that it's a disgrace for them to are doing their job, I have a hard time with that. I think, again, I think there were some very qualified people. I trust that what we heard from the three members on that appointments committee and that they had a challenging choice to make and they made that choice. I'm voting, plan to vote in favor because I'm voting in favor of that process. If we want to discuss some of these other things, you know, the person's already on the board. If it's not a difference in the membership in terms of what their role is, then why do we have an associate member? Right? So I just, to say that they're there and they can give their statement, yeah, that's true. I recognize that and I fully understood it even before you pointed it out, Mr. Counsel Milk, but it's not the same. And if she felt she wanted to be a full member, then currently, right now, she has the right to put that out there. So if we want to change that, great, let's have a dialogue and let's do that in the workshop, but this is not the place to do it.
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the comment that only two counselors that got emails from Ward Five residents, anybody that emailed me, I emailed them back with the exception of when they called, when a certain person called me and we talked in length on the phone. I didn't think, because we talked on the phone, I had to rewrite everything we had just discussed. I thought a phone call meant, and she initiated, but I thought the phone call was better than me trying to respond with a couple of sentences in an email. Anybody that calls, emails me, if I don't respond, which I usually do, call me. I've got a cell phone, every, all my phones, my calls go there. And I call everybody back that leaves a number, whether caller ID tells me who they are or not. And I thank my constituents for allowing me to serve in this seat.
Other questions or comments by the council? So I'd like to offer a few thoughts on this and I would preface this by saying that my intent for these comments is to make sure that the statutes, ordinance, rules and processes, policies of the council relative to appointments is clear. It's not in any way to advocate for or against any particular applicant, but there's been numerous statements made by the public and the members of the council, some of which are contradictory and not clear. So I think it's really important for the public that people understand what the actual process is and what the past actions relative to, by councils in the appointment process has been. So the first, the first point that I would make is, is people know the appointment committee is appointed by the mayor. I said one thing and only one thing to the three members when I appointed them, and that was that the job of the members of the appointment committee is to fairly review the applicants before them and to nominate the person that they think would best serve the community. That's it. There's been no other conversation to try to guide people to some other process. And I, it's a very difficult job and I thank the members of the appointment committee for undertaking this work. The second thing I would like to point out, because there's been in this chamber tonight and outside it earlier, some confusion about what the rules actually are. So there is no statute, there's no ordinance, there's no order of the council, there's no rule, any place that specifies that boards and committees in the city of Auburn will have a member of each ward or equal representation amongst the wards. Except I would point out that there are two bodies for which that is the case, and that is this council and the school committee. And the reason that that is, is they're the only two bodies in the city that can take unilateral action effectuating policy for the city. There is no other board and committee that can do that. There is only one other board, other than the school committee and the city council, that can take any type of unilateral action, and that's the planning board. But the planning board is not authorized to take action relative to policy. The only action, unilateral action, the planning board can take is in, when site plan reviews and special exception reviews are before them, and the action that they can take is based on making sure that the applicant has complied with all of the relevant statutes and ordinances that apply. Those statutes and ordinances are applied equally throughout the city. It makes no difference in this city where that occurs. And in fact, training's been provided by the city attorney to the planning board for the last two years. And one of the first points that the city attorney makes in that training attorney makes in that training is that Planning Board members undertaking that quasi-judicial role, it's not appropriate, what their opinion is, whether they like a project, whether they don't like a project, whether their neighbors like it or not, whether their ward likes it or not, their role is to act in a quasi-judicial role as a decision-maker that, that the laws and ordinances are complied with. The, the next thing that, that I would like to say is, there's been a lot of discussion here tonight about, um, this, a supposed egregious violation that we don't have, uh, a member from Ward Five on this body. So I think it's important to understand, given that the Appointment Committee is, um, examining anew all applicants in a fair and open process, anytime there is a vacancy, to determine, uh, who they think would be in the best interest of the community to fill that slot. That's happened over and over again, and, and let's talk about whether this ward representation has been an issue in the past. So let's talk about this very seat that, that, uh, has become vacant. So in December of 2022, the Appointment Committee met to, to make nominations for six members of the Planning Board, two associates, three full members whose term was expiring, and a full member who had resigned. They, uh, had eight applicants, they did their diligence, and they put forth nominations. Those nominations came in front of the council, there was a lot of debate at that council meeting. The debate was not about ward representation, the debate was about whether or not a current associate member, in that case, who had applied for a full membership, was not nominated for full membership. Not only that, was not even nominated to continue as an associate member. There was a thorough debate about that by the council, there was not one word spoken during that debate, I've gone back this week and looked at the tapes, there was not one word spoken during that debate about ward representation, and the outcome of that was that they removed the only Ward One representative to the Planning Board, and doubled the number of people on the Planning Board from Ward Five. It didn't seem that ward representation was any type of a significant issue at that point. Several years ago, in a similar action, there were appointments that came before the Appointment Committee, applications for the Auburn Water District Board of Trustees. The Auburn Water District Board of Trustees has six members. The applicants came forward, the nominee, the nominations came forth from the Appointment Committee, the Appointment Committee decided that two members that had over 20 years' experience on the Auburn Water District Board of Trustees were going to be not nominated for reappointment, and was going to end up putting two brand-new people in. The outcome of that was that the two members from Ward Five were removed, and there were no members on the Auburn Water District Board of Trustees from Ward Five, and they tripled the membership in Ward One. You go back and look at those debates, you'll find the exact same thing. Not one word was spoken by the council, including counselors who sit here tonight, who raised any concerns about ward representation. So under the current rules, ward representation may be something that the Appointment Take, uh, Committee takes into consideration, but it's not determinative, it's just one item. Um, I guess I would end this by, um, quoting former Mayor Leveque, after the, this, uh, Planning Board discussion in 2023, he was asked by the Sun Journal about this, and he said, quote, "That since all board appointments are based on terms, it's been common in the past for some members not to be reappointed after a term expires." He said, "The Appointment Committee looks at a balance between retention of legacy knowledge and putting new people who have a diverse background and better reflect the characteristics of the city." In other words, what Mayor Leveque was saying was what the charge the Appointment Committee is. Fairly look at all of the applications and make a decision who they believe would be the person best suited to represent the community, and understanding that when terms expire, people are not automatically reappointed. So I wanted to make sure that it was clear what the process is, and how the council has acted in the past to address this issue, and then I would finally say, as I said earlier, and I said 13 months ago, if there is counselors who believe that the Appointment Committee should be amended, then they can bring forth a proposal, we'll go through the process and debate whether the Appointment Committee process should be amended or not. So with that, is there any further questions or comments by the council? Not seeing any, is the council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Four having voted in the affirmative, and three in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to reports. I have several items from the mayor's report to report tonight. Um, I want to thank, um, Mr. Labonte from Transportation, and Mr. Cousins from, um, Public Services, uh, for coordinating the airport master planning session. Counsel Weisner and I attended, there was very good attendance at the meeting, very active discussion, and it was very encouraging, uh, to see the work that's going on to, um, create the master plan to move the airport forward. Um, since we last met, I attended the opening of Chairlift Three at Lost Valley, uh, it's really great addition to Lost Valley, um, it's a growing business, it's really, uh, a great asset to the community, uh, kudos to the staff. The majority of the work for, uh, installing the chairlift was done by the local staff, uh, and it, it's really a great, uh, addition. Um, Comp Plan Committee, um, uh, recently met, uh, a chair and vice chair was elected, um, Mr. Cleveland was elected by the members as a chair, and Mr. Staples as the vice chair. Um, uh, hasn't been a significant amount of substantive work yet, because we're, um, in the process of contracting with the Comp Plan Consultant to work with the committee. Um, I would point out to folks that the Comp Plan Committee is going to be meeting of the, on the fourth Tuesday of every month in the community room across the hall, uh, at 6:00 PM, and the next meeting is February 25th. We had some, uh, briefing on the, um, 121 Mill Street, so I won't say too much about that, I do appreciate the interest by the counselors that came by, and, uh, all the work the staff has put into it, and a great first day by the volunteers at the drop-in center. Supplemental budget, um, um, discussion has been underway at the Legislature, as we've talked about before, there's a significant issue in the reg- relative curtailing certain benefits under general assistance, uh, mostly, uh, to, uh, one of which doesn't really affect us, which is not allowing payments beyond the maximum. We, we don't do that, as a council, we'll recall, we adopted the standard schedule, and those are the payments that are made, but the other one, uh, limits emergency housing assistance, um, uh, to three months from nine months, which will have a significant impact. The latest on that is it appears that, um, the Legislature is not going to tackle the policy issue in the supplemental budget, and will bring this up, uh, during the regu- regular budget cycle. Um, there's, uh, in it, in addition to that, for which we submitted testimony, we've submitted testimony on LD 152, which is, uh, uh, requirement of the Freedom of Information, uh, Freedom of Access Act to, um, return all results within 30 days, for which is impractical, and there's lots of good reasons why that wouldn't happen. Um, MMA Legislative Policy Committee has met, we went over 50, 60 bills at the meeting the other day, I'll be getting a list of the MMA positions circulated from MMA here shortly, and I will pass that on to the counselors, so they can see on, uh, issues related to municipal government, what MMA's position is on those, um, bills. That's all I have, um, Counsel Gary?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, Counsel Weisner.
Uh, just to, uh, note that Counselor Platts and I attended the Audit Committee, uh, meeting last week, and were encouraged, uh, to see that the auditor is ahead of schedule as compared to last year, and that the Finance Department is making good strides in trying to catch up and, on some of the issues that they need to deal with pertaining to the audit, uh, and a note that they had to drop everything for several hours last week, when there was the executive order just curtailing all this federal spending, and it took time away from the important work that they have to do.
Thank you, Counsel Cal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only announcement, uh, sitting on the Sustainability and Natural Resource Management Board, uh, my colleagues asked me to let the public know that, uh, if you're interested in being involved in one of their work, one of the working groups, um, there are four, uh, the Natural Products and Agricultural, uh, Agriculture Working Group, Ag Group, uh, Conservation Working Group, Community Forest Working Group, and Sustainability Working Group, they, uh, would love to have more, uh, folks involved in that, so, if you're interested, uh, check out the website. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Milks.
Nothing tonight.
Counsel Weisner.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I think you covered the, what I attended with you, um, for events, thank you.
Counsel Walker.
Nothing, sir.
Counsel Platt.
I've got two updates from the School Department, um, the first is, at our last meeting, um, the Superintendent released the State of the Schools Report, um, this is an annual report, for those of you that haven't seen it, it breaks each school in the district down, um, with regard to, uh, things like test scores, uh, chronic absenteeism, economic disadvantage, et cetera. Um, that, I guess a couple highlights, um, the school district uses two major, two main tests for standardized testing, one is the NWEA, uh, the Northwestern Assessment, and then the STAR test. Um, in those, I can't remember which test I'm referencing, but, uh, district-wide, two small declines in math and reading, there was a 2% decline in math proficiency, and a 3% decline in reading proficiency, uh, year to year, I'd have to check if that was NWEA or STAR testing, um, so slight decline there, I think the big win that you'll hear that, I've talked about it before, but, uh, was the graduation rate at the high school up to 94.8%, that's highlighted in the report, uh, and that report's available on the School Department website. The second update, um, is in regard to a, a notification sent out by the Superintendent last week, um, regarding, um, questions that have arisen about what if ICE enters a school or requests to enter a school, Immigration and Customs Enforcement. Obviously, we don't have any information about what's happening, or if something's going to happen, or when it's going to happen, um, but the, the Superintendent did send out a notification to parents, uh, obviously schools, teachers, everybody, uh, and they're going through all the proper protocols to make sure that everybody knows what to do if something arises. Um, again, this is all preliminary and, and preventative, nothing has happened, uh, but the School Department is thinking about this, and, um, you can read that letter, it was posted on the School Department website, if you're interested, happy to send the link out if anybody needs it, and that's all, thanks.
Thank you, Representative Vega.
Um, I just wanted to give a shout-out to all of the kids who participated in the District Two Festival for both band and choir, um, it was hosted at EL this year, which was really exciting, I got to help out with some of the behind-the-scenes, but I unfortunately couldn't make it, but I heard some videos, and they sounded really awesome, and also I believe the mixed choir conductor was an alum from Edward Little, so that was kind of cool, um, but yeah, that's all.
Great, thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, just a couple items left, based on what everyone else has already covered, uh, first, uh, the city revale, um, inspections were kicked off today, encourage people who have questions, uh, regarding that process, there is, our website for city revale is available, uh, and also please contact, uh, the City Assessor's Office if you have any questions, if you received a postcard, uh, looking to schedule an appointment, we'd ask that you reach out to that office. Uh, the website is very informative, uh, you will see photos of inspectors, you'll know who they are, uh, so it's a good outline process, uh, for the public, uh, for those to occur. Uh, second, I was invited, uh, to attend the Main Ways to Energy's monthly meeting, uh, with Counsel Walker, uh, we had good discussions regarding, um, some of the challenges currently, uh, with the site layout at Main Ways to Energy, uh, we have, I have a few takeaways from that meeting, uh, to follow up, uh, with the board, I'll do that at their following, following meeting, uh, as, as it pertains to, uh, road discontinuance, uh, access to the road, and what, uh, opportunities Main Ways to Energy has to be able to streamline, um, those residents and commercial trucks that come in on that property, and how best to make that more safe, uh, for everyone involved. That's it, Mayor.
Uh, yeah, just one follow-up comment to the, uh, manager's update on revaluation, I received a postcard in the mail and find that where I live is in the first zone for revaluation, so, in an upcoming meeting, I'll report to the council how, in real life, all this worked. If there's, uh, nothing else from the council, uh, Counsel Cal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, following up on the revale, I had a constituent ask some questions about, about the process, um, and, uh, got quick answers back from the assessors, so just encourage if people have questions about how that process works, if they have concerns about people, you know, coming into their homes, or if they're going to be around, there's, there's, there's a number of options for people, so just encourage you to, to, to reach out to, uh, the Assessor's Office, and they'll walk you through that, so.
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I ask a question through the chair to my council seatmate on the Homeless Committee? Next meeting.
Um, yes, so, uh, the, the current plan is we, we, the ad, Mayor's Ad-Hoc Committee on Homelessness has finalized a report and set of recommendations for consideration by the council and, uh, staff, um, it's in process, uh, we're currently, currently on the draft agenda for the 18th, uh, our next meeting for the City Council, so, um, looking forward to having members of that committee present to you all in terms of some of the thoughts, um, and certainly, um, a lot of it's been happening over the past year, so, um, that's very encouraging in itself, so.
Counsel Gary.
Yes, but I thought because of the storm, we're not meeting this week.
That is correct, sorry, now, which meeting you were talking about? Uh, yeah, we, we had planned to have a, um, a, a meeting just for people to walk through, uh, how the presentation would go, predominantly on Thursday, but with the storm, we're going to reschedule that, uh, to be determined, so I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the second open session of the evening, if there's any members of the public that would like to address the council about an item that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
Um, Evans 0122 Granite Street, I guess I just have a question, um, as it pertains to council policies, uh, yeah, we, we went through an appointment policy earlier, uh, counselors disagreed with regard to what was qualified, what wasn't qualified, um, if you had expertise, was it reasonable to say that you are sitting on the board and can provide the expertise, or is it only reasonable to say the expertise, uh, is more meaningful if you can provide the expertise and vote? And the term qualified and qualifications, fair merits, uh, these terms sort of all came up. Uh, Counsel Weisner did ask a direct question, uh, I think he was being kind of gracious when he thanked his fellow counselors for providing an answer, I think Counsel Platts provided the most, um, comprehensive answer, and stating that, um, it was really based on, uh, his belief in the process, and, and so, um, to that extent, I think Counsel Platts gave a, sort of a, the most direct answer, but, um, if people, if we want folks to apply to boards and committees, um, and then they go through a process where they get told they're not qualified enough, or less qualified than someone else, but there's no qualifications to look at, um, I think it, um, discourages, I think it discourages public participation. Um, I, I can't- I, I can't imagine that an auto mechanic watching this meeting is going to apply to the Planning Board after they just watched someone who has legal experience, had experience on a board knocked out because someone else was a lawyer and also had a couple, had some experience on a board as well. It just, it, it would seem to me that it would discourage residents in general from applying because they'll feel that they aren't qualified, and it's particularly hard when there are no qualifications to, to point to. So I would ask that if the Appointment Committee continues to rely on qualifications, that the council would ask them to provide what specific qualifications were the, the things that they were looking for ahead of time? Were applicants aware of what those qualifications were looking for? And at the end of the day, I will say, making the argument that someone is more qualified than someone else is, it's nice, but in the same way that the city council is not required to have ward representation, you're not required to appoint someone with more experience than someone else with less experience. You guys are the political body, so it's kind of, you're at will to do what you want. So I, I think qualifications written down, if that's what the Appointment Committee is going to rely on, would be helpful. I think as it is, the current process probably discourages lots of residents from, from even wanting to, to apply and go through the process. Thank you.
So just to respond to Mr. Sears' point, he raises some good questions. I would repeat what I said before. I guess I would preface that by the only qualification for any board and committee in the city of Auburn is that you're a resident, if you're talking hired qualifications. That's it. You have to be a resident. I, I think that people use the term qualification here fairly loosely, but the charge to the committee is not pick the most qualified person. The charge to the committee is to review the applicants and pick, to nominate the person that they think is best suited or will best serve the community. And it, and it is subjective, and it doesn't contain a list of detailed qualifications for each board. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the council? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any. The open session will be closed. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Weisner. Is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Whiting. All those in favor? The council will be adjourned.